You are getting the.
Okay, good to hear. Okay, let's probably be in order for that. So first up, entertain additions, additions to the agenda. Is that an additional addition?
During my year, I mean, sorry.
And I do have one item that I would like to add to the agenda. I'd just like to make comments and ask a question of staff. Again, uh, I came up, uh, of meeting last night, so. With your permission, I would like to add that to the beginning of the agenda. And now entertain a motion, famous, so inclined to accept the, the agenda at the beginning.
So.
So. Motion support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign? Motion is carried. Okay, next up is local. Sarah. This is easy now.
Commissioner Whitman?
President.
Thank you. Commissioner Stahl? Commissioner Fitz? Commissioner Piccolo? Commissioner Almond?
Here.
Weissmer Harrington?
Present.
Your name is?
Present.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. All right, welcome. Good news. Next, we'll move to the president of the House. The House raised the rise and asked for a participation in the House.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with one objective, justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up is the approval of the minutes of the June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one regular session and the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one work session minutes. Your pleasure. I'm taking.
Support.
We have a motion for. Is there any comments, questions, additions or deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. That motion is carried. Thank you. I'm in. Here's where I'll insert my request for, my requested item for the agenda. It was brought to my attention today that perhaps we might have been a procedural error at the end of our meeting last night. Someone apparently on social media made the comment something about, um, once a motion, once a motion has been on the table and defeated, that the item was then completed and no further action is called for or allowed. Now that, I believe, was a strict interpretation. It was intended to be a strict interpretation of Robert's Rules of Orders. I don't believe that this body has adopted a strict interpretation of Robert's Rules to be governed, uh, to govern our meetings by. But that being said, I would ask staff to look into that. See if that is indeed true about Robert's Rules. And perhaps whether or not we need to clarify our activities or actions.
If I can just confirm, Mr. Mayor, that we're looking at two things really. I want to see if we've adopted Robert's Rules.
Yeah.
If you've ever adopted them formally and if we have. And then, that being the case, you're not to check into this. If a motion has been repeated, is there supposed to be any other action?
Right. Well, happy to get that information, that complaint information, uh, the action was during meetings.
And I will take a look at this, but. Well, I think there might be a distinction here. The matter is, there were four options on the table. And I think there is a, there is a point to be made that if, if it's a yes or no, up and down, that's it. If a motion to pass something is defeated, then it's defeated. That was just the first question. There were other options. And that's why I thought, anyway, let this continue. That was my take. I didn't do research on it. It was, you know, kind of a small moment, but that, to me, that's a distinction of merit. I was asked that question as we left. Uh, by a couple people. That was my thought. I looked, it seemed, once me too, I was certain to take a look, and if I was wrong, I would acknowledge that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I, and I asked, I don't know, I had the same impression we did that we were choosing among four items, but. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? I added. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Appreciate the indulgence there. Next up, communications. We have multiple communications from members of the public. We got a conditional resigning proposal from Deputy Christian Services for the building. Motion is to, uh, I guess what is your pleasure for motion, if you receive? Uh, motion support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? The motion is carried. And, uh, communications are ready to see. Next up. Did we skip this one?
Yeah.
If you're single, try to. What are the other nations from city managers in Mexico? I told you this twenty twenty-four. Oh, twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry. I missed it. Does anybody do want to receive that?
Motion received. Some have been timed for screening.
It's very important.
I'll just say that way.
Reluctant.
Okay, comments or questions? I'm sure the only ones who want to say what this date comes to us.
Thank you. That's, that's all.
Okay, still there on the camera, it's on Matt. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion is carried. I can't say thank you, but did you want to say something, Matt?
I, I just, it's, it's thirty-one years, um, a long time. But I'm not going on vacation for three months. I will be here and continue to look at the things that will.
We will continue with the meeting. I appreciate everything you have done, considering the numbers and beyond. Okay. Moving on down. Request for purchase. Consideration of request for purchasing amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, two, thirty-two, two hundred and sixty thousand, thirty-two dollars. Initially, this will best manage an authority for the renewal of the city's liability and property insurance coverage for the period of July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Your pleasure.
motion support.
Have motions for. Any other questions? It's an annual, what do you do? A long thing always comes to my mind. Uh, how's this compared to last year?
Exactly. It's roughly seventeen thousand dollars. We run the most last year, but that is because we added seven vehicles. Actually, it was the last year, that was nine thousand dollars. So, take into account the addition of the vehicles, it's roughly forty-eight percent of the increase from last year, which, uh, according to our agents, been up far. What we, what you've been saying for agencies.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any additional question, comments? Okay, I believe we had a motion for on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next up is consideration of a request for purchasing amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars through signature for to the purchase of a twenty twenty-one Ford all-wheel-drive police interceptor for the all-police department. And I believe this is, uh, part of the state purchasing contract?
Yes, sir.
Particularly purchase our vehicles?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment?
Support.
The motion is for. Anybody have any additional questions or comments?
Is this a, um, SUV?
Yes, sir. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? The motion is carried. Thank you. Number three, consideration of request for purchasing amount of one, uh, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars to Honor Security Incorporated of Saginaw, Michigan for upgrading the current security and software systems at the Elmo Public Library to AverCloud cameras and software, which will include replacement of old cameras, installation of program, and programming of new cameras, and training for staff. Your pleasure. No? Same sign? Motion support. Comments or questions?
I, I think probably the word said this is one of the things on the table last month. Um, we did look into, and I'm gonna dive on the sword here because, uh, even the next item, when we talk about the, the other for the network for, uh, for transit out there with the doors. I misspoke when I talked about buses. It, this, that's a door system and cameras, not a bus system and cameras. So when I was talking about differences between the buses and the doors, really, there's no compatibility with Elmo Public Schools. The library is a system that's been in place for a long time. This is an actual upgrade to the current system, so we're not replacing the system. Yep, to that system that's been there for fifteen years. So it's a upgrade to that. So there's no compatibility as we talk about looking at other things. That would be more of a planning process down the road if we start to look at them. We almost now got all the buildings, though unfortunately, tied in on their own over time, I think.
And how many separate systems do you have? Do we only have its own?
As much as we have.
Manufacturer?
As much as we have a building because the timing has always been different. Yes. And I don't think. Danger, I think, bring him. I don't think we have any better reason than the same between two of them. Over time.
No, the alarm system at the library, which part of the library, when that was built, so that system was part of that contract, so. The city hall's been on its own for, for society here, and transit, that was another one that was also a part of the, that was built.
So there's no central monitoring available or?
We do have central monitoring, but we do have monitoring announced to the same company. They all immediately go essential dispatch, which they have issue with. There's no central, what's the word, more companies that they go to?
Would it be wise to have a system that, although these are compatible?
That's something we would definitely use, but then. If it's available to those.
Is, is this the system that, as we acknowledge, sits on the table today, is this the system we're upgrading? Is this the system you're monitoring all of those?
I think some of the systems are, are very, very different in, in nature, what the buildings are, and, and the other portion would be tiny enough. Some of these are older, some of these.
No, I, I get that, but.
But looking at the whole system.
Let's play the paper today. If you had a choice, would you buy the system for all you know?
I do not know. I don't do that.
And I do. You think this is not a fair question to ask on the spot like this, but.
I don't think we would go back to our door system that we have went through here. But I, I think we would probably go.
The company, right? Is that what you're saying? The company?
No, company aside, the system, the actual system.
I think the most current system that we just have put in here, in this building now that we're seeing, would be one that would, and would be the most compatible, what we call. We've seen here. The same old security system under touchpad, it's, you know, probably going to be updated. You'll need a year or two. I know it's all types of issues, kept that going. You can look at very bad system that I think would be most compatible with the, the library. There's a few different options we could look into for upgrading all of them at the same time, if needed. But we can look at piggybacking on those two systems to see what would cost to add in the building without, because the city halls has, by part of the other system, so. As far as security goes, security, I'm interested in the system.
Security, that's separate from the other.
Correct.
Here's.
They are totally separate systems, yeah. Yeah, security here really entails the two things. We have the door system, and then we talk about the camera system.
Yeah.
So they're not compatible. It's, it's across the board because car dealers rule the system, and, and obviously, if you come in, um, and don't, this army, you can use this, still get in, but it will still set the alarm off. Ideally, we'll bring these, have these connected, so once you break that security system, it should, uh, looking at something like that. I know the library has that option as well. That was kind of state-of-the-art system when we did the libraries, um, transit, I would assume, is probably released to this as well. But the libraries has a plethora of different options that they have for that. That would be something that would look similar to, to, to libraries, because I was first on that. Just the top of my head, that's all.
Yeah, and I, I really want to make a commitment to invest in that system for all of our buildings. I'm doing a lot of research and. They anticipate it to take that. I just.
It'll take a full cycle of everything coming up.
Yeah, and at some point, we need to start this process of saying, here's a comprehensive security plan in the month for all of our facilities. This is what it needs to look like. And how, how, when do, how do we start building it? And when do we start building it? It seems like the time when replacing old stuff is, is a good time to start, so. I believe we have a motion and, and motion and, uh, support on the table. So. That being, thanks to anybody else having any other question or comments? Okay. Now, it's ahead of time. I tend to look against this because I think now is the time we should be taking a comprehensive approach to this and looking at all of our needs, um, and buildings. All those in favor? On the table.
Aye.
Any opposed? At the beginning. So the motion is carried. Next up is similar for a consideration of the purchase of purchasing amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars to Unified Network Consulting of Eppica, Michigan, for upgrades to the access control and camera systems at Elmo Transit, including installation and staff training. So, motion carried. Your pleasure.
Hello, panel.
Support.
Motion support. Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me? Motion's passed. Thank you. Next in line, consideration of a request for purchasing amount of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars to Post-Mont Science and Traffic of Bay Rapids, Michigan for a new electronic sign at Elmo Library, including installation, software setup and support. Your pleasure.
Can I make motion when we ask questions?
Thank you.
Move approval.
Support.
Have a motion support. Comments or questions?
We had asked last time about if this money was for library's money, but it was, I can already stated that this is what it was going to be used for, and then there was a question whether it could be moved. I mean. I mean morally, I kind of object to that, I mean, if it was library's money, I feel like it's library's money, but can you tell us legally if it's?
So, I guess I will, I'll also defer to Tony. I don't think I can, but. Uh, what, what gets tricky, and the part that I'm, the part that I'm getting hung up on is that when I was looking at how, like, our, um, how it's written for us, it was written before we were getting, the library was getting money from other sources. And, and originally, all of the library's money was coming from, you know, revenue or from the city itself. Now, there's such a pool of money that's coming into the library, and some of it is specifically earmarked for the library. So if you look at the fund balance, that's made up of a mixture of.
So type of concern.
And I, yeah, and I don't know how that works when there is, because I don't know how you determine, I guess, when you have an expenditure, are you using the money that's coming from specifically earmarked, or the one that's from the city, so.
Can I ask a question then?
Yeah.
Because my understanding is, when you reduce the budget this year, we were told the library needed seventy-five thousand dollars by general fund, if I remember correctly. Is that, and I believe, so I believe, the, the, the reduced amount this year coming through to the library in general fund was seventy-five thousand, which I believe was a seventy-five thousand dollar increase, but this year, they need to know that out. Okay. So, our general fund budget allocated seventy-five thousand to the library. A budget amendment could reduce that amount. Is that not correct?
That's seventy-five thousand, yes.
We are, we are, there's a little bit of a preview to reduce the budget amount, right? Of seventy-five thousand, that contribution, you know?
Correct. That is something that could be.
That is where I see this money coming from. Or those be true, perhaps do something different with those funds. That's my personal opinion, and nothing against the library. I love the library. I'm very, very proud of the library. I think they're the best library around. And you have great staff and everything else. And I'm not against the sign. I encouraged, back in the day, that we put a electronic sign over there a long, long time ago. But for whatever reason, it was chosen to put in that brick sign, and I don't know what we paid for it. I assume it's around ten grand for a sign like that.
Twelve.
Okay, twelve thousand dollars, we've got sunk into this brick structure, the sign. And now we want to put another thirty-seven thousand dollars in it when we've got parks that need maintenance, that, that kids are walking on boardwalks, that they have to have loose boards, uh, loose outalls, or whatever, here to river, and, you know, the, the list goes on, the needs around that community.
So my, then my question is to that. What do we do to use, if we're gonna take this thirty-seven thousand dollars back from the library, how are we gonna allocate that money to the specific fixing of the park? Instead of it getting into the general budget and just going there like, and?
Whenever the question, it's always.
Yeah, look, if I, yeah, when I look at this, there's a charter provision in section six point six, transfer appropriations. And the way I read this, it says after the budget has been adopted, no money shall be drawn from the treasury of the city nor shall any obligation or the expenditure of money be incurred except pursuant to the budget appropriation. So basically, someone, once it's budgeted, that's how much you get, that's, that's it. Then it says the commission may however transfer any unencumbered appropriation balance or any portion of, from one department fund or agency to another. Then it says the balance of any, in, in any budget appropriation, which has not been encumbered, and then it says only the net pertaining to, uh, municipal utility, which this would imply, at the end of the fiscal year, shall revert to the general fund and be re-appropriated during the next fiscal year. The way I read that, this was done in, I think, two thousand nineteen, there was a, right? Eighteen? No, that's even, that's even more. So at the end of that year, if, if it wasn't spent, I think six point six says it goes back to the general fund, and that's the way I read it. But isn't it encumbered?
If it's a capital proj, if, if it's a, if it's a capital project, what do we consider encumbered?
That's the dividend, not encumbered.
Yeah, I don't know that that's encumbered. I, I don't see that.
If we apply the contract, it encumber those funds.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been identified, but I think that would be almost anything, I mean.
Yeah, maybe the budget.
In other words, I, the way I read this is, is it, and I, you know, look, quickly knew what we do. But the, but the question was, do you, you know, are you looking at just adding another, you know, ten thousand or fifteen thousand to make the twenty-some thousand, thirty-seven? Or would you have to, you know, take back the twenty-three or whatever it was in two thousand and eighteen and re-appropriate thirty-seven? The way I read this, I think it's the latter. That's, that's the way I, that's the way I do it.
Define the latter.
That, that it, it would go back to the general, it, it would go back to the general fund and then be re-appropriated. You know, that's the way I would read it. Now, I don't really cover it any the way you do, and, and I, I'll be, and let's not be honest with you. Accounting was never my forte, believe me. So I, you know, if, if, that's not the way I read that, well.
So anytime, any capital project that we don't complete in a budgeted year, we're technically supposed to put back in the general fund and then re? Because, so that's not what we're doing. And again, I'm not saying right or wrong. I'm not one hundred percent sure of the answer. I'm trying to get clarified. I'm obviously new to, and so I'm learning this too. But I was under the interpretation, I guess, from what I have been reading, that if a capital project, all their expenditures are one hundred percent earned, but capital projects are treated as encumbered essentially.
Capital project once approved by this board, like, that's, there's a reason this is coming back to this board for approval. Once this re-approved, then it may become encumbered by definition.
So it's not approved until the, it's approved or it's approved when it's approved in the budget? I guess that's, I mean, that's the qualification.
But that, that's a question, because that's a question we have, because we have on the number.
But if it was encumbered and, and by the fact that we budgeted those mon, most funds, then there'd be no reason for it to come back to this, this board here.
Well, really, yeah, what we're, I think, and that's, the part again, we were kind of confusing is because I was under the interpretation, at this point, we're approving the bid, not the project. Because at this point, the project's been approved, so at this point, we're not really approving whether we should do the project itself. We're trying to, but we're approving whether or not we should go with the bid that we are proposing. And again, that's just my, was my interpretation during my research for all the projects.
I think ultimately, it falls to this board to decide whether or not we want to do the project, whether or not, for whatever reason, this board has the authority to, no matter how you want to do it, whether it's a budget amendment, you're getting those funds from the library budget, or just saying no to this capital agreement. I think this board has the authority to do that. Well, there's no question because we need more money.
If, 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 and if you could, if you could purchase it for the same amount of money as before, then your question would be completely relevant, and it would be, and then we'd have to decide that first. But they need, you know, a ten grand at least, right, in order to buy this new sign?
Or, yes, or what, what?
Or, or it's already, so either way, the city commission has the final say.
Look, you gotta, you need to read the, through the contract, it, it, I believe, they keep the funding of the project. And that's what I mean. So that's, I mean, so either way, it's up to the city commission to decide whether or not this is.
We seem to have a lot of things that flow from one, that don't get completed in one year, so I, I get them. And I, and I'm just, and kind of just taking, for lack of a better word, now, that, yet, I, I, I feel concerned that if we're giving them an allocation to department heads, say, budget money. I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I see gray areas, but I do.
My understanding during the budgeting process was that that money was necessary for operations at the library. I don't recall, I was telling you, the current year operations of, you know, providing, you know, terminal lights on, hiring the staff, running the programs.
But I'm thinking in Lori's.
I don't believe in a conversation about buying a sign.
You assumed that, or figured that this project or this item was approved, it was just a matter of getting the, the bits in and the timing and all of that. So I, so I guess where my conflict is, is that we give an allocation to a department heads of what they can need to spend their money on, and then we decide, we think it's, and I'm not saying that this is what, maybe you can correct me, but then we decide, well, we've got other things that we probably should spend. I, I just feel like we're giving the money and like, no, we're gonna take this back, and then that's where my concern at this point.
Yeah, I, I get it. My, my, my understanding was, though, it was in two thousand and eighteen, there was a specific, uh, it was a decision made that, that you're earmarking, what was it, twenty-some thousand dollars? Yeah, for this item.
And that's.
And I could certainly understand that.
So twenty-nine-five to thirty-eight isn't that much different than three years.
I get it. No, I'm not saying that that's true. I, I mean, I agree with you, and I'm not saying it's unreasonable at all. But I, I could see the, the rationale behind this provision, read the way I read it, in the sense that if you appropriate a certain amount of money for a specific thing, and it's not done in a year, and then the next year or year after that, they come back and say, we need more money, I think you have the ability to say, wait a minute. You know what I mean? In certain circumstances.
Right, right.
How did that happen? Why, why wouldn't you spend it when you could have bought it for what you originally, you know, said you were gonna buy it for? I could see a rationale for this. I, like, I, I.
Well, that's something very different.
Different director, they're, you know, I mean, I don't. So, you know.
And I'm different.
But that, I, that's the way I live it.
Well, I have a comment too. Um, originally, I think I explained the last meeting, that we actually ended up with these extra resources because of the crazy year. We were closed for several months. We, we were down at a full-time employee and a part-time employee, so there were, there were monies left over at the end of this budget period. And that, that's the twenty-twenty-one budget. And we didn't have any local contribution in that budget. It was strictly penal fines, um, millage monies, state aid, all specifically earmarked for library expenditures. It's not like this money can be taken and used for bathrooms or to fix the river walk. The monies that we received in the budget that year can only be used for library operations or library projects.
But we can change the budget. You have that ability.
So, at the end of the day, we can change the budget.
So one thing I think, one thing I think I'm.
You bet you. I know that we can change the budget.
I think we are, we are kind of almost talking about two different subjects here, though, because you could approve the project and also change the budget because the seventy-five thousand is for operational costs for this upcoming fiscal year. The money that we.
That money isn't going to the sign, that's what the people.
The year that we're taking the money for this sign, we didn't have any local contribution, zero. It was all, all money that was, um, either paying taxes for the library or penal fines, and I don't think he can use that money. You, you can't take that. I don't think he can take.
But if we remove the seventy-five thousand dollars that we allocated for the, for this budget year.
Right.
We can do that.
But this is, but, I know, I understand that, but I'm talking about the twenty-twenty-one budget, which is where we want to take the money for the sign from.
Yeah, we, we.
I, you can't, you put water, you put water in a bucket. You can take out the glass of water, whatever you want. Tell me what you're getting out of it, whether it's last year's water or this year's water. It's water at the end of the day. I'm sorry, I have a huge problem with appearances. Must buy, that's a forty thousand, thirty thousand dollar sign. And we've got sidewalk stuff keeping, because we've got trees that should have been removed downtown years ago, decades ago. We've got little walk that's falling apart. Our parks haven't had any maintenance in them for decades. We've got all kinds of buildings with deferred maintenance all over the place, our streets, our sewers. It just seems really wrong to be buying a sign of this nature at this time. It's nobody else's library. I don't have any problem with that. I love the library.
But, but Greg, that's your opinion and.
It is my opinion, yes. Okay.
Well, and I, and that, and that's, I appreciate all those things you said we need money for, absolutely. My concern is where, where I, that I feel like this, what Lori is saying is the money was library-specific money here, and that they're asking for the increase for employees, so that we take the seventy thousand dollars, where they should get a fire some staff. I mean, how does that, I mean, I don't think it's the.
Especially with the signs, you don't have to.
Well, I, but it doesn't sound like it's the same. I, I know you're saying it's all in one water, but it doesn't, it sounds like it's murky water, and that there's mon, specific library money. And so it also seems in some ways, and I'm just, I'm not a financial person, but it also seems in some ways like, well, don't do a good job and come under budgets that you can save for, um, a project. I, I'm just thinking at it from the individual department heads. If you're working on, I mean, we're part of the whole city, but you're working with your funds to stick, and we've been struggling for years for them to know how much funds they even have, and we're, you know, trying to crawl out of that hole. So my concern is that we had a project in two thousand and eighteen, that you had money that was specific library money for all the multitude of things. It didn't happen then, costs have gone up on things, so I, I appreciate that we have infrastructure and parks and things, but I also, I guess I just feel the way it's been explained, that this is library money. And you really can't compare this digital sign to this stone sign that's at Elmo Public Library. I mean, this digital sign is just going to, is an opportunity to bring awareness.
Library, I mean, this digital sign is just going to, is an opportunity to bring awareness to literally thousands of people in the community and beyond.
You have, you have four candidates now, Greg.
We could have better attendants. There's a whole group of people that we aren't even reaching, we, our reach right now is as far as Facebook will take us, but there's thousands of more people, you know, thousands more that we could be reaching out to, um, and letting them know what needs we can fill for them at our library, and not even just the library, but the entire community, the things we could announce and make people aware of, the holiday events, the sporting events, emergency notices, um, so many things, like, we're talking about four million views per year, I just can't even imagine what that money would.
Are those signs a driving distraction in any way?
Well, it's gonna be a distraction that draws your, it's like, the only thing that's going to be there is gonna be.
I think that general, not in that specific side, they, people are trying to read and.
It'll be a dynamic sign with graphics, and it's gonna draw people's eyes to it, and they're gonna see the messages that we're putting out here, and it could really bring so many more people to our downtown library events that we're having, um, and make people aware of what are, what things are going on around this. I, I can remember seeing the Ellen's Fire meetings, and one of the things they talked about a lot was, what can we do to bring more awareness to people? Um, how do we let them know that we've got these events going on? How do we reach people to, to let them know? And everybody coming in to talk from this direction, that sign's gonna be the first thing they see, and, you know, it, it, a digital sign tends to stick with people more, they remember things that are what they see and read on it, so who knows what kind of opportunities it could bring to all of us, actually, to bring more awareness to a bigger group of people. I think it would be an amazing opportunity.
With the initial sign being approved at roughly twenty-nine thousand, is the, is the increase just the labor material costs over those three years, or is it a different sign altogether?
It's a two-sided sign, the original one was just a one-sided sign to go on the library. This is a two-sided sign that will, it's a ten-millimeter pixel, it'll go on the stone sign out there, so there's a little bit of money, extra money involved in setting it in there, and it's, it's just a, uh, it's a, a bigger, more dynamics, it's a more dynamic size, you know, for out by the road than just a one-sided, blind side.
So, if what was approved initially in, in what, twenty, twenty eighteen, what would, what would relatively that cost now? Just so I can get a scale in terms of what types of increase we're looking to see versus a change in sign?
Oh, what, why, oh, I, I don't.
Or did you even pursue that original sign, you just, we changed, we just, we kind of changed direction, sorry, but.
I, I just felt like it was more, it was gonna be, bring a bigger benefit to all of us out by the road, two-sided, something with a little bit more dynamic.
What was the initial reasoning for not going out of the first place?
Not going on the building?
Now, what would have been twenty eighteen, what was the reason for not doing it?
That was incorrect, it was in twenty, and he, he, that was his choice. And the extra money is not coming from any taxpayer contribution or local contribution, it's just extra money that we had, and I know Greg is funny, but, um, it, it was extra money that Curtis found, and so, I know, but I, it's a perfect time to give, and I think it's an amazing opportunity, and I think that we are just gonna be, you know, there's so much, so many things we can just make awareness of, but I heard so many times, I wish I had known that that was going on, and I wish I had known that that is happening, and everybody's gonna see this sign.
And then, Chris had mentioned that initially he thought this was more of an approval of a bid, I think typically when we see bid, we see more than one, um, and, and again, forgetting that only that you've been.
No, this time, this time.
Now, this, I do remember that.
No, the first time you ever asked, yeah, they've been there since the beginning.
Can I change, um, direction, there you go, there you go. Can I change directions for just a minute? What's the vandalism potion of a sign like that being within reach of people's hands? Is it gonna be covered with glass or?
I don't think the country club is getting, having a problem with their sign up there, and that's right out, and you know, like, that's the digital sign that's up there, I don't think, have you marked that off?
No, my school's got one, too.
Yeah, basically the same kind of thing as that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It just seemed to me, you, you put this thing out four feet away from the, uh, street, and first thing that's gonna happen is somebody's gonna punch it, and that's gonna be the end of it.
They, the companies, it's, it's seventeen, it's a real material, there's a complete , I mean, complete warranty to the fibers of these, like, curse or labor.
Okay, thank you.
So, please scan it, say anything, then we'll be right back, if, if somebody shoots it or something.
Hopefully, I can most easily. Any additional comments or questions? Did you hear the motion is put on the table? You're young, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You mean again? Motion's carried, thank you. Moving resolutions, first up is consideration of a resolution approving temporary traffic control order number one fifty-seven to place no parking signs on the north side of Blanco between Argyle Court and Iowa Street. Your pleasure. Okay, there's, I believe the motion is support, any additional questions?
And this is for the, um, Iowa Street product, right?
No, this was, what was the language, for Blanco, this was another question.
Well, I thought maybe we were doing it for, um.
No, no, that's not gonna do that, it's actually hoping that they're not temporary, usually full effects, so, you know, we put it on, it's a request from a resident, um, parking on both sides, that street is not wide enough to allow parking on both sides, it's only wide enough to park me on one. Typically, you would put it on whatever side the height is on, but there's a height on the west block, on the south side, and on the east block, there's a height on the north side. There really is no consistency with the people at heart, so we've sent an upper halt, um, came back with a five-foot halt, so the recommendation is just to park the second on the north side, and that's where we're at tonight.
Thank you.
Any more comments or questions? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion's carried, thank you. Next up is consideration of a resolution approving temporary traffic control order number one fifty-eight, place no parking signs on both sides of Hayes Avenue from Marquette Boulevard to Michigan Avenue. Your pleasure.
Motion.
Is there a reason why we're doing it on both sides?
Yes.
Yeah, can you get some more?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
It's more, okay, now.
Four, and I'm sorry, is there a reason why we're doing it on both sides of that street?
Yes, that's an arrow right away, and this one's, and this will be permanent. Um, the right away is only thirty foot wide, and the street is only twenty-three foot wide, and so it doesn't accommodate parking on either side, we still have two-way traffic for it, so, um, the streets within that region are all no parking on both sides, so consistent with the streets in the east and west.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any more comments or questions? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion's carried, thank you. Moving down to ordinances, consideration of a resolution to adopt ordinance number eight twenty-one to amend the zoning map of the city of Alma as appeared in section sixty to fifty-two of the ordinances of the city of Alma. This ordinance is to conditionally resolve the premises commonly referred to as three-fourteen through three-twenty-two East Center Street, formerly known as the State Liquor Control Sherwin-Williams Building, from B-one Central Business District to B-two General Business District, subject to the conditions set forth in the conditional zoning agreements. Your pleasure. So, my, that motion's put, we discussed this in the past, uh, any other questions, comments, stay up?
I have a comment, I've, I've had a few people reach out to me, I think it's more of a, a lack of probably reading the full agenda, I think a lot of people are concerned based on how last night's meeting went, um, with, um, confusion, a lot of people have reached out to me saying they were confused, they were thinking that maybe this ordinance, so is there, is there merit to, to maybe postponing or pushing it back based on, based on confusion from the community? Last night, obviously, was pretty heated, uh, debate, um. Now, this is a, usually we're zoning just for this, this premises, three-fourteen, three-twenty-two. It's the building that's, it's been formally known, if you lived here a long time, Downtown Plaza, it's where Ellicott Bureau is and Sherwin-Williams. The liquor control, as it says there, is the building that's been vacant, it's in the far eastern, I'm sorry, western portion of that building for years and years. Um, Bowden All Investments owns the property, they also own the Northtown Plaza, they're in the process of trying to, you know, to sell this, because obviously, they're, they're changing their, their, uh, business, um, holdings, and, uh, the new hospital owners, Lori and John, uh, Reiner, and what they'd like to do, uh, which is not allowed in our B-one zoning district, is to sell some vehicles in the parking lot there in front of where the liquor control is at. So, for them to do that, um, we have to look at this initial zoning, we held a, um, public hearing, um, sent a letter to them, that block there, the, the comment we got, um, was from a neighbor that's just to the west, two houses down, and it was about the dumpster receptacle, and, uh, the soon, if, if this, the soon passed, the soon the owner said, well, we won't put a dumpster in, we'll just use two rollaways, just like a residential model, so, that was in the comment we got, and, uh, the, the potential owner was, weren't happy to do that, so that called, that took care of any, um, comment we had there.
And again, because there, there limits to do that, became part of the condition, all this agreement.
And, and I'll go ahead and I'll read that out, um, um, the second part of that, if this, if you pass this ordinance, the second part is the actual agreement, that the current owner, which is Bowden All Investments, that's signed, and the city would sign, and that would be registered, registered deeds, which creates a new zoning layer with that agreement on top of the B-one district, allowing for this B-two use, which is to sell those vehicles. If, at one point, if Lori and John decide they want to sell the, sell the property, and the new owner comes in, doesn't want to sell cars, this goes away, it's no longer could be used, it goes back to the B-one zoning district, but if that person wanted to continue to sell cars, that continues to build the property. But underneath the preliminary use, and these are all voluntary that they provide in, and it's in the, as a, um, initial zoning agreement, preliminary use restrictions, three-fourteen, to be used in park or used vehicle sales with outdoor sales area and the adjacent park, no on-site vehicle repairs, used vehicles to be sold outside the building, shared parking lot, strike to accommodate twenty-four spaces for sellable vehicles as approved in the site plan, the remainder of the lot will be for customers, you, um, customers of the used, of vehicle lot and the commercial spaces at three-fourteen, three-twenty-two, which is Sherwin-Williams and Ellicott Bureau. Uh, the used vehicle hours of operation are between nine AM and seven PM, the ownership provide a change of use plan, and other required permits to the appropriate building trade inspections locally and the state of Michigan. And then, so additional laws, talking about the, the lighting and the, and the setup there, will utilize the existing light fixtures on the building and the existing light poles in the, in the parking area. Uh, a green space will be created and maintained between the parking lot and East Center Street. If you drive down through there right now, you have the curb, broken asphalt, parking lot, that will be all taken out, they're gonna put a green space in there. Uh, signage will consist of one unlighted sign for both businesses at three-fourteen East Center Street on the front of the building, and that requires a permit also. Um, and the exterior rollaways, like we discussed, the exterior rollaway, uh, waste receptacles will be concealed, real built. So, that's, that's all part of that, so if that, you know, if you pass this ordinance, then the next item would be the agreement that gets signed, and then they're tied to those, those actual instructions, and it's just for this, this location, and if I'm gonna do what we talked about last night, at all, it's totally two completely different.
I think we've had an opportunity to talk about it, and I think there are a couple of people in the community that definitely needed to hear, I think that, that side, and I still thank you for, for trying to write in that, that supplement. So, does this do anything with the building that used to be JTS?
That is, um, Bowden All Investments sold that to a different gentleman that lives in the Montplum area.
Okay.
Um.
This is not, that building is not.
It's not part of that anymore, they, that's now settled, it's not.
And you mentioned the ability to sell this, and the zoning could potentially lift this, if somebody might continue to car sales at that location, um, but that also obligates that next owner to these same conditions.
Exactly.
They don't know where the conditions remain in place.
And that's why it gives us a little more, um, enforcement a little from my office, if they're out selling their car that's parked, where they're supposed to be parked, um, they're not actively for sale, if they are damaged, those sorts of things, we can pull their use from them. I think the green space will be a, a nice addition, everybody's driven through there, and you have, it's driven off, because you don't really notice that there's not, you have, there's no longer a spot.
And you can't see where the curve cuts, top of the line, right?
Oh, just aesthetically, it's, it's, it's so much better.
Yep.
Hey, any other comments or questions? I believe we had a motion on the table. Hear nothing further, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion's carried, thank you. Uh, moving on to the limits, consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of a conditional zoning agreement, oops, is this the same one, I'm just guessing, I did, sorry, please just. Oh, the, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, it's not, okay, actually. So, consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of the conditional zoning agreement from the city of Alma, Bowden, Bowden All Investments, the property owner, which conditionally resones the property located at three-fourteen through three-twenty-two East Appears, East Center Street, from B-one Central Business District to B-two General Business District. And, and what? And motion's put, any additional comments or questions? Hear none, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, that motion's carried, thank you. Moving down reports, commissioners may have received, uh, the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may have due to any item or all of the items in the section for individual discussion and vote. We have before us, Ellicott Transit, June twenty-twenty-one report, zoning board of appeals, June twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one minutes, building permits report for June twenty-twenty-one, police department report for June twenty-twenty-one, and the city manager's July first, twenty-twenty-one report. Your pleasure, and we see that it's called the city manager matter.
Um, I, yeah. I, I move approval except for the city manager.
Hey, anyone else? This part, you know, my following thing, as chance, I was in favor.
Aye.
Hey, you have, we see four reports. Now, any other motions to receive, report from the city manager? Motion's put, comments or questions?
Comments in the state, I'll get, get, get some comments. Um, I know we've been hammering this thing for a number of weeks now, that, that short-term removal, I, I am like, at least reports, you think it's probably effectively stalled at this point in time, because some other things are coming out, there's still some debate back and forth among the, the state legislation, legislators, excuse me, as to where we're gonna end up with this. I, I think that, uh, just for some color for folks who may be watching, there've been bills introduced that would basically eliminate our opportunity to do rental inspections, uh, by really taking vacation homes, Airbnb's and those types of things, and taking away all, uh, for local government to be able to, uh, have their lives in place. For us, the biggest issue is not that we have a, a ton of rental, or, uh, vacation homes that people are using in this term, but we have a very solid rental program that we've worked real hard to get to a certain point, so I think it's, it's important that we, uh, continue that, and so our voice, I do think, uh, I give you some of the, uh, the survey that was done by the Michigan Restaurant and Housing Association, I hope that's what had some impact on the state legislators, as, as things installed. The, the language of compromise, um, has been there, but not, I would say, been, uh, adopted into the actual bill stack, and so hopefully, when, uh, they come back and this comes back, uh, in front of them, they will, 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 uh, a lot of pressure by a lot of places, and if you look, our, our, the, um, resolution we did a couple meetings ago is now part of that document through MML, as much as state legislature, so, we'll keep, wishing we'll keep that. I hope you had a chance to take a look, um, like, we've got a blue article written by Chief Oberla, the intent was to have blue here tonight with Chief Oberla, but through the shifting things, there's a school board meeting going on right now, that, um, that she's a member of the school board also, so we will make sure to bring them back, but it's, it's really. It can't be that blue. Yes, yeah, it can't be that blue. Really nice to see, as we've, we've taken some strides, it's getting some statewide recognition for some things that we have done, and it's nice to see it recognized, so we'll make sure that you continue to congratulate them back, um, but we'll bring them back, it'll be nice to see them all. I have, uh, I have to admit, I, 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 I walked over there, and that dog puts it out on my lap, and it works, and I don't know, anybody's ever had a service dog that did those things for you, I wasn't a believer, but I'm like, wow, that's kinda cool, so. Uh, some of the other reports, Sarah, and I did, that's it, no. Sarah, I've had passed along the November twenty-twenty election report for you, uh, to be able to read, um, through that, I think that's something that we've all heard a lot about, we'll just leave that there and let you read through it on your own.
And just, there was a report from the state of Michigan, not a locally.
Correct, yes, that was Brooklyn State, done by the Senate Oversight Committee, from state, but you get a little down. Uh, you know, there, the update on the latest public policy, uh, Michigan Public Policy Survey, um, the Center for Local State Urban Policy from University of Michigan, um, that's available for your, your reading pleasure, and then, I think, we're going to, uh, in the new business, we have something, when we talk about the RAREC American Rescue Plan, I like to plan and throw out the date of Wednesday, August fourth, post a possible do look session to hit that next planning portion. Um, after last night, I know it's going to be August second, most likely for for another light, which may maybe move this album one week. I don't want to involve anybody within within a short period of time. So I'll send that out, we'll do a little, what are those, what do they call them, little surveys, make sure what date looks best for everybody. But the good thing is, um, and we have new business that will come on after this, is that, uh, on the agenda for this week, then we do have the request for approval to begin the application process. Uh, for the corner buyer's local fiscal recovery request. And one of the areas we know we've had within our audits that are one of the things about making sure that we have a proper way to vet and go through our application process for grants. We are bringing that to the the city commissions. And I heard the city of Alma's new Alma Finance Policy Commission approval is required before we submit. So I I'm happy to say that actually we're coming in to ask you for, are you guys okay with us receiving nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars instead of nine hundred and thirty, nine hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and three dollars? Please go on, stay with me through the federal government, so that's what we look to. Keep in mind, those are going to be two distinctly, uh, half and half will come first within generally within two weeks of our application. And then approximately twelve months later, we'll be, uh, necessarily start the plan.
The only question is where are you sitting here?
He's already, actually, he he brought over me today, they completed application, all it has to do is say submit with a signature. And so if if you're good for that, in this.
Love to give a, thank you.
I I have a question, if I, um, did we ever get that other grant?
No.
For the.
As of today, we are still the CBVG.
The one that, um, reimbursement to employees or whatever that was that we talked about?
Yes, we have, yes, we have received all.
Is all the, the. First few fundings or whatever, have received those ones?
No, not not, that one is not out yet. There is a lot of speculation of who and how we have to do that. There are no good ways, but the money is here, the money is here.
Money is here, but it's not.
Have to wait this first.
And do we have a deadline for that?
December thirty first. Not that we want to wait.
December thirty first? Are you sure you can be here in December?
From there.
Cause I, are you sure?
We have the money.
We have.
Oh, we have the money.
We have.
Oh, okay, cause I was like, I've used government funds, you use that, you know, it's like, oh, you gotta grab it when you can.
We have the money, we have the money, we just have not dispersed it.
Okay, thank you. I was like, thinking.
So it's not, it's not that you don't trust Curtis.
No, right. No, I was thinking you still had to apply for it with the grant, get it from the government, and like, um, I don't think we should wait for this. Okay, so it's here. All right, thank you, I was just checking that with the grants, so, thank you.
And that's it, unless there's any other questions.
Okay, we had a full motion on this one on the table to receive the report from, yeah, it's a pleasure, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion's carried, thank you. We have received your reports. Moving in your business, consideration of resolutions for previous national grant application to the state of Michigan for the corner of the local buyer's state and local fiscal recovery funds. Apprehended CSLFR, for some reason, available to non entitlement units, which is us, populations less than fifty thousand, through the American Rescue Plan totaling nine hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and three dollars.
So moved.
You're so hesitant, like. Any additional comments or questions? Been a long time coming, we talked a lot about this, so.
And we'll continue to talk a lot.
Please sit down. Nothing, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from Joey, is it? Petruvelli?
Excellent.
Seriously. Well, thank you, uh, consumed cannabis, we got the recreational marijuana.
Could I point out too? Thank you, Aaron. Makes it very easy. I brought my own laptop, I wasn't sure if I could access any of this stuff, thank you.
Joe, if you just scroll on the mouse wheel there, it's going to advance your slides.
All right, cool.
Yep.
Um, good evening, everybody, thank you, my name is Joey Kedley, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. Um, as you're aware, I'm here presenting with the poss- for the possibility of adopting a adult use marijuana retail, um, sales ordinance, um, that's implemented into the current existing medical marijuana facility licensing ordinance that you have. Um, there's currently three approved facilities in the city of Alma to operate at a retail level on the medical side. And what I'm hoping that we can start is today to, uh, have a dialogue that kind of ends with a Q and A, little back and forth discussion, maybe answering any questions. Just overall spectrum of what's going on in the industry right now and hopefully get us closer to the possibility of having adult use recreational sales in the city of Alma. Uh, I'm going to go through, just kind of do a little introduction about who I'm representing, which interests in the city, um, state affairs in the industry overall throughout the state, kind of benefits to the city, and just close out with some requests and hopefully, um, productive dialogue that we go back and forth. So who we are, um, I represent Consum cannabis, they were your first marijuana provisioning center that opened in late twenty twenty. They were one of the three winners in the lottery that was carefully thought out, drawn up, and and a very good ordinance that was written. I've seen plenty throughout the state, um, I've been involved in drafting ordinances throughout the state, so they've all done an excellent job. They identified a cap that they wanted for retailers, they identified identified a process, zoning buffers, such as the users were eliminated. Um, and they ended up with three provisioning centers that were that were approved. I don't think the third one's operating yet, but I know we've been operating since approximately October or November. Um, we did our build out in mid twenty twenty, did a full scale, um, build over on Warwick, and we've been successfully operating the business. Um, but there's still room for improvement if we can get adult sales in there. Um, just to give some more background and shed some light on our particular, uh, my client's operation. We have additional facilities in each of the pier, Harrisville, Ionia, Warren, Quincy Township and Basin. Every one of those facilities are retail facility except for Warren, and every one of them is either actively in adult use recreational sales or will have recreational sales likely by the end of this month or simply waiting on state inspections. Um, we've been vetted, we've been operating success- successfully, um, we've been doing very well in all of our markets. This is unfortunately our worst market because it's the only one where we only have medical sales. Um, operation began in twenty twenty, as I mentioned. Um, currently we re-employ approximately fifteen employees, all of which are local employees, we all pay, we pay everybody significantly above the living wage, I think all of our employees are pretty happy. We haven't had any complaints from the city, from any local residents or from any local business owners. In fact, what we found is that our participation in the local economy has been beneficial to the other participants in in the local surrounding businesses. We've been able to drive a little bit of traffic, we've increased the tax base by building in the building, we've brought new jobs, we've established relationships with some of the other local retailers, um, such as, uh, I had it written down here. Uh, Sydney Loose Cookies, where we're setting up opportunities for them to create custom cookies for us, non infused, non marijuana, regular cookies and stuff, goodies for for customers and stuff. Uh, we've developed a relationship, a referral relationship with Future Vapes, because they sell ancillary accessories that we don't, uh, we don't sell in our store. Um, but we've done a pretty good job of networking in the short time we've been here. We've also participated in some of the local community events, Dolly's for Rescue, where we, um, raised food, animal food, bedding, litter and cash donations for a local animal shelter. Eight cap of Grashit, we we donated and collected puzzles, toiletries, monetary consideration for that particular, um, charitable cause. State of affairs in the, in the state of Michigan. So overall, what we've seen since the adult use market has been introduced into the state is most counties, and you'll see a couple of them, you have some slight increase in 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 the number of patients that are registered. But overall, you'll see Grashit County, Isabella County, Saginaw, Ionia, they've seen a significant drop in the amount of registered patients that are eligible for shop at our current facility. As a provisioning center, we can only service those people that have that hold a caregiver card, where they're authorized to cultivate in their own facility, up to five patients, or somebody who's a registered patient that has a qualifying medical condition. In all of Grashit County as county as of May twenty twenty one, there's only two hundred and forty two registered patients, the entire county. So that's our target clientele right now, that's all we have to work with. Our alternative in order for us to generate any type of revenues or or go outside of the city of Alma is we have to get into, you know, advertising and getting significant discounts way outside of our scope to draw people into the city, or delivery. Which delivery service is not ideal, we we'd like to kind of steer away from delivery, just because of the, you know, the insurance involved with it, the liability involved with it, and, uh, you know, employees and things like that. It's not as stable to the line of delivery, especially when, um, you have adult use markets right right next to us in in Mount Pleasant. Um, so the number of caregivers comparatively has also decreased. So if you see Grashit County, Isabella, uh, Ionia, Saginaw, all taking a decrease as well, those are also our target clientele, they're also eligible to come into our facility. So if you add the fifty for Grashit and, you know, Grash- all of Grashit County, we're only talking about four or five hundred people in the entire county that are eligible to come into our shop. It's significantly limiting our growth, significantly limiting our ability to support the investment that we've made into the city. And that's why we're here today. Um, we're hoping that just consideration of the adult use ordinance will give us the opportunity to expand, bring more jobs, bring more revenue, bring more traffic to the city, and put us in a position where we can be stable in the city limits. Um, operational considerations, so there's a, there's a misconception that every time I, you know, go into a meeting, um, just about how the operations run. In large part, they're significantly the same. Um, target customers are slightly different, target customers we can only sell currently, as I mentioned, to people who are eighteen years old and registered caregivers or hold a patient, a patient card with a qualifying condition. Adult use markets, as you're probably aware, can service anybody who's twenty one years of older and maintain the valid government issue ID. Um, from the tax perspective, and I'll touch on this later in the benefits portion too, right now, as a provisioning center in the city's limits, all we're generating is a regular six percent sales tax. Anything that's generated, any other taxable product in a grocery store, in a liquor store, or anywhere else where you purchase a regular product, the city is not seeing any benefit from the tax perspective. Now, on the flip side, the adult use market allows, or requires us, I shouldn't say allows, requires us to impose a ten percent excise tax and a six percent sales tax. That ten percent excise tax is actually funneled back to the city through the state's fund, and I'll touch on it later, but, um, just not to jump ahead, but I still kind of got to jump ahead. That ten percent last year resulted in every single retailer in the state being, uh, I'm sorry, every single municipality being given twenty eight thousand dollars per retail adult use facility in their city. Some cities collected as much as four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars, if you go to the, um, the Bay Cities, which is extremely saturated, the Calum Zoo area is extremely saturated with retailers. Um, I get that there's a limit here, it's only three, but it still would be significant. I mentioned, I I heard the mayor mention a few different projects that could use some, um, financial assistance throughout the city sidewalks. It's the city's discretion to use that money however they want. Um, in terms of security measures and licensing regulations, they're the exact same in both the adult use market and the medical market. Full line of security cameras, required thirty days monitoring, security sensors on 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 the cameras, motion sensors. Um, every door is secured with a FOB card, there only restricted access is provided to only employees, and even within the facility, certain portions of the facility are only given access to managerial or ownership level employees. Um, in terms of employees in the facility, um, it's a little quirky because you could be a medical facility and employ an eighteen year old. And in that same facility, once they transition to an adult use facility, can only employ twenty one year olds. So that's that's one little nuance of the state laws that that came into play. Um, the one thing that I that I commonly find is is, uh, there's a misconception about is the products that are sold. Every product that is sold in a medical or a recreational facility is the exact same. The only difference on that product is that one of them comes from the state with a yellow metric tag, which is a serial number for it, and the other one comes with a blue metric tag. That's all, and the blue metric tag signifies that it's eligible to be sold to an adult use customer. The yellow tag requires that the person comes in with a patient registry card or a caregiver card. Other than that, THC content is the same, test testing regulations are the same, distribution channels are the same, secure transporter is the same. The only difference is that they come with a different tag, cultivated in the same facility, processed in the same manner. Every single dynamic of the product that enters the facility is the exact same. The only difference is words processed, the words cul- words manufactured, that's it.
Okay, second question.
Absolutely.
If you came, I'm.
I'm going to go back to that one.
I know, it's, I'm not familiar with your business, Ted's business, so if you became, uh, you're currently med- medical and then you became recreational.
Yes.
Why did you need a different vehicle?
That's state required, so it's two entirely different markets that they regulate. Even when they, even when they, um, investigate the applications, right? You have to go through a pre qualification process at the state level where they vet you and it's it's the medical side, and you get what's called a medical pre qualification. On the adult use side, you have to submit almost an identical application to be a retailer on the adult use side. And then for growers and processors, they have to go through the same process. In order for them to get licensed, they have to get licensed on the medical side, and you have to get licensed on the recreational side. The only difference for for the for the market is the medical prices, because there's such a significant difference in how many, um, how many potential customers you have, or client, you know, there's only a couple hundred thousand patients in the entire state. That product is offered at a slight discount at wholesale, that's why there's still an existing medical market.
I have a different understanding why they would take a marijuana card and more.
And 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 I completely agree, it's a very good question, so that's it. There's a slight discount offered on the medical product because the licensing fees associated with the medical market are lo- are lower also. Um, so that that's just passed along wholesale and then retail. And if you go into some facilities, provisioning centers versus retailers, the provisioning center prices will also be slightly lower versus the retail side on the same product. So that's the benefit.
Thank you.
There's a ten percent.
And you say a ten percent excise tax.
On the red bridge.
So what most of the provisioning centers are doing these days to offset that is if they, if if there's a particular product they don't carry in the medical side, because there's just not enough in the market for, they will offer a ten percent discount if they buy a new product, if they're twenty one years old. So.
Do you see the 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 medical market going away? I mean, is it, is it being regulated as much by the state that it will go away, or do you see that it will eventually?
So in full disclosure, I'm actually a licensee myself, not at this facility, I have my own operating facilities, I have a cultivation facility, and I'm doing an inspection for tomorrow in Coleran, actually, right down the street. And I have an operating media facility in Calum Zoo. For every hundred customers that come into my Calum Zoo facility, I probably get three or four medical patients. Next month is my renewal, I am not renewing my medical license, I will not pay the five thousand local fee for Calum Zoo, and I will not pay the, uh, I think now it's thirteen thousand for medical license. Now, on the flip side, some markets, and I'll touch on this later as well, like Portage, require us to maintain both licenses. So I have to pay it, but I will never sell a medical product in that facility because it's a headache maintaining two different inventories, it's a headache, you know, the employee, an eighteen versus a twenty one year old in a certain area. So we will maintain the license in Portage because the ordinance requires it, and we stop to pay our five thousand fee to the city, we stop to pay our thirteen thousand to the state, but we'll never sell a medical product there because it just doesn't make sense to us. To answer your question, yes, I see the medical market going away. It's a little more elaborate than you were looking for, but I figure more information is helpful in this situation. Um, benefits to the city, so, you know, we're coming here and and we're hoping to open up this discussion, have a dialogue, go back and forth. It would only make sense to point out some of the benefits that the city has and could could derive from this, um, adoption of a new ordinance or the amendment of the existing ordinance. So currently, the city of Alma is only generating five thousand dollars per renewal fee annually from three existing licensees. Well, in addition to the other grow processing, but that's not really what I'm concerned with, I'm concerned with the retail. There's three retailers, five thousand a year, fifteen thousand a year, is all the city is currently seeing. If the city were to adopt an adult use ordinance, they would see five thousand per medical license, five thousand per recreational license to be given, thirty thousand. And then they would see that additional kickback on the excise tax that goes to the municipalities, which last year was twenty eight thousand, that was the first year of adult use, where revenues were nowhere near what they're going to be this year and in coming years. I would expect that number to probably escalate to closer to thirty five to forty thousand in this year and even higher for the years after that. Um, just due to regulations and markets that are opting into the recreational market. And you're sharing this on a county level, right? So revenues that are generated by each county trickle down equally to the municipalities, and they're paid out the same thing. So each facility this year earned twenty eight thousand dollars. Um, I'm sorry, each municipality earned twenty eight thousand dollars per facility in their municipality. Um, so I kind of skipped over that second point. So, uh, that that twenty eight thousand this year would have equated to another eighty four thousand in excise tax money, plus another fifteen in in adult use local licensing money, so ninety nine thousand is what would have been made last year by the city of Alma. Um, adult use job, or jobs in the adult use market. As it currently stands, I went through the list of facilities that we have in other markets, every one of those facilities currently employs approximately thirty to thirty five employees, because the demand is there, we have additional traffic, we have part time, we have full time employees, we need more of almost every position in those facilities. Right now, the city of Alma location that we have has the lowest number of employees that we have, it's only about fifteen on average, um, part time and then full time. If we did get adult use, we would probably be closer to that thirty to thirty five number, and again, we're paying way above the living wage. I believe our starting wage, and I have Jeff Cox here from our operations side, he could comment on it more, I think our starting wage is thirteen or fourteen bucks?
I think it's fourteen or fifteen.
Fourteen or fifteen, okay, so fourteen or fifteen dollars are our starting wages, no experience needed, admin, admin just sitting at a computer, um, and it goes up from there.
And that's the, that's benefits on top of that as well.
Thank you.
There's all kinds of benefits.
Benefits. So so we're paying well, we're bringing jobs, um, we're keeping happy employees, um, and adult use would only allow us to expand that that number of employees and bring more jobs and pay above the living wage. Um, so, you know, with the other two existing retailers that are already here, you're probably talking about another fifty to sixty jobs between them as well, so overall, I'd say we'd be adding seventy to eighty jobs to the city. And I'm pretty sure, I'm familiar with one of the other ones, he's also an attorney, they also pay above the living wage at his other facilities, so, uh, I'm. they also pay above a living wage at his other facilities, so, uh, I'm comfortable saying that they'll probably be paying somewhere in that same premium level we're paying. It's kind of industry standard, um, in most markets. Increased traffic. Um, there's a negative stigma associated with many of our facilities that it would bring crime, it would bring, you know, bad clientele and this and that, and really that's not the case. If you look at any municipality throughout the state, and I'm comfortable saying any municipality throughout the state, crime is at a low. The security cameras that are installed are state-of-the-art, they come in the entire facility, interior, exterior, and as a result, also shine on, on local munis, local buildings, streets, the lighting is all brand-new and required by the state, and what you find is that these other facilities that neighbor us find themselves in more secure areas, they find themselves having additional traffic for their food operations, for their retail operations, and their revenues actually go up. They find benefit in us being next door to them. We draw traffic. We have people who come from other municipalities to visit our facility, if they don't have adult use in their own townships, and they have the opportunity to spend within the town and generate revenue for other facilities within the town, other, any business within the town. Um, property values. So for us, we built this facility from the ground up, right Jeff?
That's correct.
Yeah, this one was built from the ground up, brand-new tax base, brand-new building, state-of-the-art on the interior. If any of you had the opportunity to come out, we welcome you and you can take a tour as a visitor. Um, we have to barge you into the visitor log, so, um, but you'd see that we have everything state-of-the-art there, um, and, and it's, it's buttoned down in terms of regulations, in terms of statutory compliance with all the state regulations. We have regular visits from the MRA, they make sure that we're complying in terms of how we handle our product, in terms of our security cameras, in terms of our employee laws, making sure we do background checks on every single employee that we maintain on file. I mean, the list goes on and on in terms of regulatory requirements that we have to keep up with, and that benefit will show in how we operate our business and in what benefit it would bring to the city of Alma. Um, additional benefits, so I copied and pasted and error the first two lines, you can ignore that, I can say it again if you want, but I did that in error. Um, in terms of, uh, in terms of the sheer product itself, um, there's a large unregulated market that still exists because of the old two thousand eight laws, the, the MMRA, the Medical Marijuana Act, where people can go to any doctor, say their back hurts, they get a patient card, and they get assigned a caregiver, or they find a caregiver who's cultivating in their basement, who's cultivating in abandoned warehouses, or wherever they decide to set up shop. That market is completely unregulated at this time. It still exists, but it's completely unregulated. There's nothing that the city of Alma is going to do to prevent that, not the city of Alma or anybody else in reality. You have a ton of unregulated product, and it's because they have easy access to it. Um, if you don't have a patient card to go into a provisioning center, you've got to resort a lot of the time to, to either go to another city, to an adult use market, or getting this black market product that's not tested, that has, you know, mold, that has all types of intoxicants that are put on it, um, and, and it's being sold out of houses, out of, out of warehouses, anywhere that you can imagine. Um, what we've seen in the markets that I've participated in is, there's a gradual, gradual transition from having to deal with going and getting that black market product, to once you have an adult use retail access, you'll go, you'll get that safer product because the price point's not significantly different. You're in a safer environment, all of our facilities have security guards, you're not walking into some random house. Um, it will alleviate the amount of, of, you know, illicit market that takes place. Uh, in addition, ah, what was my next word? Lost my focus. No testing, oh, there's no testing requirements, and there's no transportation requirements for that market. You have people just transporting however they want, whatever they want in that type of market, versus our secure transporter that's required from the state, they're also licensed through this licensing process, manifest, tracking exactly where they go, every, every route they take on a daily basis, it's generated at the state level, and they have an exact manifest of the, of the path that they have to take to your facility. And the minute they enter our facility, they're hitting a button that says we received that package, the state knows it's in our facility, and they know they bought our facility. So it's, it's a high level of monitoring that really does away with the illicit market. Um, and throughout the state, I've seen that that's been the case, that you see a significantly diminished illicit market when adult use is, is introduced. Um, business concerns. Um, so for us in particular, we're trying to begin an idea of where does work coming from. Um, as I mentioned earlier, this is our lowest employment store, and this is also our lowest revenue generating store. It's no, it's no coincidence that it's because it's only based on medical provisioning center, uh, permissions. What we're looking for is kind of a reciprocal, you know, commitment to us. We built a brand-new building within the city, we've shown that we're here to stay, we've started hiring local employees, um, we've done everything we can to show that we are committed to the city of Alma. Um, what we're seeing is months, just minutes away, is tapping into this market with the adult use accessibility, not only with people leaving the city of Alma to go get it from there, but they're also tapping in with deliveries. They're doing a significant amount of volume and revenue with their ability to sell adult use product in the city limits. So, the reality is, whether adult use is here or not, whether it's being sold within the city, it's still here. I mean, you can make a call right now, you could have it delivered to any residents, as long as you have a valid identification, twenty-one years or older, you can get that product, it'll be delivered for a slight charge, and you don't have to leave the city. It's still being sold here, and there's nothing that the city can do per state regulations to prevent that either. Um, that's just the reality of the situation. Um, uh, I already mentioned the, the additional employees that would be brought. Um, oh, from, from a purely production standpoint, the question was touched, what's the difference between the products? You're starting to see a gradual decrease in manufacturers also providing medical product, and a decrease of availability for us to retail that product because they see that there's a higher margin and higher, um, higher demand for adult use product. Being able to retail adult use product here would allow us to participate in that market, give us more access to safer product, and be able to participate in that market. Um, I don't know what I did here, but it's not a phone anymore. Um, so, that's, that's kind of all I really have, you know? Oh, I, I'm sorry, there we go, work. City discretion. The other thing that I do want to mention that's very important is, the city does have a ton of discretion, they have all the discretion. The way the state regulations are drafted is just like the medical side. The city has all of the discretion they want to determine, buffers from sensitive uses, number of facilities, zoning restrictions, hours of operation, you have all of the authority if you decide to move forward with discussions or adopting an ordinance to decide how to implement, just as it was with the medical side, lottery was introduced, applications were accepted within a certain lingo, you have all of the authority and discretion to do that in this situation as well. I know that there was some, some hesitance on, on the medical side, and there was an appetite for only three at the time. The discretion can be as simple as simply modifying the existing ordinance to keep the cap at three, keep the zoning restrictions in place, and amend it so that Merga, Michigan regulator, Michigan Regulation of Taxation of Marijuana Act, Merga for us, um, is implemented into the existing facilities. That's, it's, I mean, it sounds simple, and I've seen it done relatively simply in other cities where they do that. Um, Clare did the same thing, where they had a medical marijuana ordinance, and they just modified a few words to include Merga and to include the existing facilities, they maintained all their restrictions, and the number of licensees that they had did not change. Um, it's still free in the entire city, um, growers, processors, and provisioning centers, it's still free and it's not going to change. It can be as simple as that, or city has discretion, change it all over and, and implement some strict, stricter restrictions, hours of operation, whatever is that they deem desirable or fits within the concept of the city of Alma and what it is that they're trying to, um, attain here. Um, ultimately, uh, obviously, there's no vote taking place there. Um, this is a local business owner who's taken that dive and invested in the city, built in the building, hired employees, and trying to continue a dialogue and relationship with the city. Um, we felt like this was a first step to at least get that following and see well or at, hopefully, receive some feedback today. If there's additional concerns that I didn't address, if there's just unknowns, um, in, in general about the market that I'm, that I can answer, I'd be happy to. Um, going forward, I'd like to keep the lines of communication open, if there's an opportunity to maybe work with the city on drafting an ordinance, maybe, um, somehow be involved in, in, in future meetings where there is a vote taken, an opportunity to, to present and maybe move forward with a formal action by this commission, that's what we're trying to do there. Um, our commitment is to the city, our commitment is to following state regulations as well, and, and we can really move forward in terms of growing, in terms of contributing more to the city. Um, we're kind of capped out at that, and, and we're capped out in a market that's overall, you know, seeing a, a decline, and, and that's why we're here. Um, so if there's anything else I can answer, um, any questions in general, anything about what I presented that I can answer, I'd, I'd be happy to. And, and if there's just general thoughts that any of you commissioners have in terms of, you know, this is kind of my opinion and my concerns and, and, and what I'd like to see happen, or what I think might, um, make me a little more comfortable with the concept of adult use, I'm happy to hear that, and we'll go back and we'll game plan and we'll come up with different ideas that we think might address that concern or that thought. That's, uh, well, definitely, I appreciate you attending that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
Joey, I have, I have a question if I may.
Yes.
And I have heard this comment by a couple of people, literally, are knowledgeable or not, I don't know. But I have heard the concern that eventually your entire business is going to disappear due to people's ability to go there.
So, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, actually, because that was, that was in the way that one of the screens I missed. When I touched on the idea of people being caregivers and, and, um, uh, going for up to five patients in a, in their house or whatever else, right now, the adult use market allows anybody, caregiver, not caregiver, patient, not patient, to allow, to grow up to twelve clients in their primary residence, which is a whole bunch. Which, twelve clients is more than any individual will be on a monthly basis.
Right.
Um, so yes, that, that is not going away, that's part of the state regulations, and again, that's one of those things that the city unfortunately does no nostalgia, has the authority to eliminate. As long as somebody is residing in their, their permanent residence, primary residence, they have the ability to cultivate up to twelve clients. Now, that being said, people, it, it's, it's not easy. Not anybody can do it, and not anybody's going to spend their time trying to do it and get that product and have illicit product that, that has mold and other, um, negative side effects versus going to an adult use retailer. That's kind of what I touched on earlier, that that will kind of be a deterrent for those people to attempt to do that within their own home versus just going to an adult use market and, and purchasing. It's not a cheap endeavor.
I think it was-
It's not a cheap endeavor, and it's, and, you know, your electric bills will go up, the lights alone are three to four hundred bucks a pop, um, it, it, and like nutrients, the water, it's not a cheap thing to do. Um, but yeah, there will be, and there, there will be people who are going to do that and can't prevent it from doing it, unfortunately. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. I'm really honored here. Thank you. Hi, thank you. Any questions?
Thanks.
I appreciate you all very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Okay. Is it, is any interested staff or hanging on this? And, yeah, you're, most of you, most of you, those that have started, um, sort of explore, but that would definitely come directly to you guys. My thought.
Yeah, I think so.
I think so.
I think it's sort of the key to we have from here, and I think they've been a good numbers for the year so far. In full disclosure, my son works there, um, but I'd go to, you know, be interested in seeing that there's an opportunity for revenue, I think it's very important.
Okay. Yeah. Sit aside? Do that, and we'll, whether we put it back together with the, maybe we have looked before or whatever, but we'll, we'll be in touch. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Appropriations are next on our agenda. Anyone in favor of paying the bills tonight?
Sure.
Come on.
Sure is clear.
Do we have a support?
Yes.
Okay, we have support. Hey, are there any questions on the bills, on the list? No questions? All those in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side? Motion's passed, thank you. Any comments? Michelle?
Um, invite everybody in the community to come out, serve and take the Alma Fairground. It's the Gresham County Community Picnic. Uh, it's called Memorial Day, and, um, we're gonna have a petting zoo from Anderson and Girls, by the committee, because it's too warm for the animals to come from Sam, they won't be there. Um, and the Brenda Loomis Band, um, is going to be playing, sponsored by commercial bank, and it's fifteen dollars for your state pride ticket, and before that, you can hit the chamber office, and or twenty dollars at the gate, and five dollars for the hot dog, in case where you want to eat a hot dog. Um, and then the twenty-fourth of June, we invite you downtown Alma for the, you know, starting in the year-
July, July.
July, yes, July, or July. And then this weekend is, what's it called, that, that race?
Oh, that's a Glen Gravel.
Glen Gravel.
It's not a, it's a gravel road ride.
Gravel Road Ride.
It's not a race. I'll mix up my race.
Exactly. So, that's all for you.
Okay, thank you. Right then.
Um, I think I'm all comfortable.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd just like to say, uh, thank you, Matt, for your, your service and, and everything you've done for me in the short period of time that I've, that I've been here, and, and you'll be missed, and I'm, I'm glad you're gonna be sticking around for a few more months to help in the transition, but, um, enjoy it, learn it.
Thanks. Thank you.
Second half, yeah. We are, we are going to miss you, it, it is well deserved. But, um, when I got the letter and the phone call, I'm like, oh, well, yeah. It's, it's, it's time, it's time, I don't know. Um, it's good to be back in this room, it is, because that's, camaraderie has been missed over the past sixteen months, or whatever it's been since we have been here. I really enjoy this. Um, Lucky McDuck is back up and running, we got the tickets, I sold tickets at the market on Saturday, and sold about a hundred bucks worth of tickets right there, so, um, but then, it's, it's kind of neat that the city has moved to, what, what are, what are we calling the city day that's gonna be? Um, you know? Celebrate Alma, one, four, Alma Alive.
Alma Alive, yes.
Alma Alive, okay. We'll be celebrated at the same time as Lucky McDuck Day, and we're kind of figuring out ways to dovetail it, because our function starts about ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, and goes to about four o'clock, and then you can move down here, and, uh, we're kind of looking on food trucks for Lucky McDuck Day, that could also move down here if that's appropriate, and then we've got the, um, uh, the road rally, the, um, what's the name of that?
The Rock.
Yeah.
Where Alma's been?
The name's Alma.
Obviously, I do not ride the bike.
Kind of everything happening on one day, and that's really kind of neat, so. Things are moving.
It's also my good thing.
And it's also good. A little motivation, okay? It's not a good day. No, it's not a good day. It's, uh, September eleventh, which is, and this is twenty years. I'm saying.
Hold on. Sir? Mr. Three?
Well, I, yeah, I think, I'm a guy of sixty-five, I don't know. I should go before him. I, I, I-
I wasn't there.
No. That was a motion, well, see. Man, I mean, you know, when I first met you like in ninety-one, maybe nineteen ninety-one, when you started, I think right around that, coaching my kids, football coaching, you know, one of your little kids is football, I really, y'all shoot going, uh, and, and, yes.
Don't make him cry, you have to make him cry.
As a police officer, and the community police and, and police athletic league, everything that you've done to the Alma good place, and, and, and your contributions to this city are immeasurable, honestly. And then, you know, you finally got to the point where you're like, that's enough police work, you know, twenty-four years, I think you had something like that, you're going to transit, you do a nice job there. But then, duty called, right? And it was kind of low effort, you know, and we had some, we had some issues, we had, I think there was, you know, as far as community was concerned, there were, there was some leadership. And you needed somebody that the whole community respected. They might not have agreed to everything you did, but they respected everything you did, they respected you as a person. And there were, in my opinion, only one person in this community that could fit that role, and that was you. So, uh, it's been a pleasure, uh, looking, working with you and, and, uh, I'll tell you, it, it is, it's tough, but, uh, you deserve it. I hope you get more, you know, but I don't know what time it will be on ours.
Okay, that was your, that was your first, what's that, over to you, like? No, it's very nice.
What was that, you brought this guy over? Hello?
Thank you, I, I, again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not taking vacation for the next three months, I'll be here. Not that I won't take any vacation. I won't be able to take any. Um, but I will be here and continue to work on the things that we are, um, it, it's just, uh, like you said, it's time. It's time, it's been a long time, I'm enjoying my, my years here. We have plenty of time to talk on that, so, thank you.
Okay, well, I can't try, the only words are for attorney, but it has been truly a pleasure working with you, Matt. I appreciate your counsel, and your lady, your dedication to our community, and all the things you've done making our place. So, it truly is a better place because you came here four years. That, that was a long year, but.
It's been a long year.
It's really, it's been a long year, so. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll open up the floor to the members of the public. If they would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, say your name, address, and.
May I ask that I don't have to walk over?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, my name is Alan Couch, I live at five fourteen South Grabston Avenue, Alma, Michigan. Uh, I'm not, not trying to cry about my disabilities and so forth, but it's important that you know that I've got A P I, I've got consistent heart failure, severe C O P D, my body is strong. I was born with over fifty percent slippy to my lower back, which has messed up shoulders, everything, okay, through the sixty-five years that, that I've lived. And, and I even had an open, uh, uh, dollar sized hole in between the two chambers of my lower heart, ended up having open heart surgery. Something that's not covered under the Samaritan with Disabilities Act is the service dog. Some people cannot hold a leash and have it be safe. Uh, I've got a thirty-three thousand dollar, uh, wheelchair, it's got six wheels, many corners on it, and it, it gets, the leash gets caught up into that, let alone a six foot leash. I, you know, I extend, I got one of those that go way out, I extend it so she gets away from me and I don't, don't care. She's very well behaved, she will be a service dog. Um, and doctors trying to figure there's only certain breeds that you can have as a medically necessary service dog, she might not hit those requirements, but she will then be an emotionally one just because of not being the breed that they allow for that. Uh, I'd like to see the, the, the city take compassion on that and allow me to use, uh, uh, a zapper, uh, collar with, with the button on it. You know, I wouldn't do that in all kinds of, sometimes you absolutely have to use a collar, even with a wealthy eight dogs, just because people are scared of them and, and different considerations. I'd never own a dog that would hurt anybody or even other animals. And, and, uh, I've talked to the chief of police about it, that's why I'm here tonight is to represent myself, uh, and state representative, I was supposed to be here, but, but we got hung up someplace else. I, I'm looking for help, have compassion on me, that, that dog is with me twenty-four seven. I didn't bring her today because of this issue and because it's raining and I can't, I didn't want to mess up your pretty hallways and mine either, because it's so wet. I don't know where to go from there. I've, I've laid my case out there, um.
So if I understand correctly, the problem with our leash law sort of prevents you from, like, complying with our regulations?
Oh, well, I, I'm complying, but it puts me in a, in a situation. It's, some streets and roads don't have sidewalks, and actually the sidewalks are bumpy for a wheelchair, so I used.
You walk by my house every day with your dog?
Yeah, and, and.
On sidewalks.
And the first tree block, she about, it goes seven miles, she about goes at nine.
Yeah. But she, she does stand right by you.
We should have staff take a look at this and come back with a recommendation.
Do I need more?
I think we're good. I think staff can come back, go, contact you if it's appropriate.
Okay. And, and, and that should be offered to anyone that's kind of in this situation.
Generally, what we do sets precedent for others as well. That's why we let staff review and come back with a proposal and discuss it at that point.
Right.
Because it sets a precedent for the.
And I know that I'm responsible for my dog's actions regardless, whether it's on a leash or whether it's running free, you know, you.
She doesn't go too far from you?
No, she stays.
She's very protective of you.
Part of the delight, we, we got into a, a corner, and, uh, she, she used to stand, but, uh, and all of a sudden fireworks went up from all four corners. She was in my lap. My chair said that.
Mr. Couch, you're five fourteen South Allen, is that what you said?
South Grab.
South Grab, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And anyone else would like to address the commission? At this point, the floor is open, please come to the podium, say your name, address.
I had to, so short, okay. Um, I just have a question. Is this, uh, what you would call a parliamentary procedure? Your, um, meeting tonight, would that be the legal terminology for how you're handling it?
It's the legal terminology, I refer to the. I guess the next one. I have a specific question I'd like to answer.
Um, well, if the Robert's New Order applies to the local community, can I be helped? I'm sorry, can you state your name? Oh, I'm sorry, Nauman, um, but if you're a city, I'm sorry, Robin Rodriguez, I'm nine oh five, West Washington, take us.
Yeah, Robbie, you know, I think I know where you're going with this.
Yeah.
And, um, the question is brought up, that, um, Mayor brought it up before the, before the meeting, he wants us to look into this. Apparently, there's a question as to whether, um, the planning commission meeting last night should have utilized Robert's rules. And if they were utilizing Robert's rules, would that require that when the motion initially, uh, to recommend approval was denied, or didn't pass anyway, was that a denial? Was that basically, you know, a, a denial and should have gone that way?
Yes.
Um, my position was and is, although I will, I'm going to look into it, and see if, if that was a mistake. But my position was, that, that works ordinarily if there's a straight up and down vote. There's two options, if it's yes or no, and, you know, in other words, you approve it or you deny it. My thought was that there were four options on the table, that, you know, you could approve it, you could deny it, you could approve it with conditions, or you could tailor it. So when, when it was approved, or excuse me, when, when the motion to approve was denied, in my opinion, that just left the other options still on the table. In other words, it wasn't necessarily no, it was, we're not ready to approve it right now. And that's why I think what ended up happening was, eventually, I think the majority of the commission felt they, they wanted to take into consideration all that was said and, and, and go forward with it that way. I'm going to look into it. If you got, and, and, you know, you, you raised some issues last night, if you have anything, I mean, I, we know each other. You called me before, or, you know, whatever, and I, you know, I, manning here still, and that's fine. If you have some authority, you know, some case law, whatever, you, anything you want to look at.
I was bringing it last night.
You don't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
You, you know how to get ahold of me, get ahold of me, I'm going to make, I'm going to look into it, I'm going to make a, you know, I'm going to make a decision whether you, you ultimately agree with it or not, but I mean, that's going to be my decision, and then you guys, you do what you gotta do, you know, act accordingly. But I'd be happy to talk to you, I'd be happy to get any authority you have, you want me to talk to, if you have an attorney, if you want me to talk to their attorney, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
All right? But that's, that's all I can do.
Appreciate you.
Goodbye, thank you.
Who would like to be next to address the commission? Anyone else? Last chance? Okay, with that, we'll entertain much to the general meeting proceeding. Motion spot, I was in favor.
Aye.
Close post, motion paid, you're adjourned, thank you very much, appreciate your understanding so much.
Thank you.